Welcome to the Canby City Regular Meeting for, gosh, September 16th, 2020. We just finished up a work session talking about small cell technology and 5G, looking at some draft pieces and guidelines. So we're glad to be here for our regular meeting this evening. We will roll into communications, Melissa and Joe.
The only thing I can say right now, I will have more to say during city administrator reports. But what you could decide to do tonight so that we could get it recorded earlier than our exec session is the way in which we presented that we would have the URA meeting at 7:45. If our regular meeting lasts till 7:45, then you could go directly into the URA and we would still have the services of Gordon and then we could end the night with the exec session so that Gordon wouldn't have to wait around for it. So, and that's the communication I have afterward while I plan to share during administrative reports.
Okay, so you want us to stretch until 7:45?
We, I'll hopefully have enough for you to stretch out your talk, for sure.
You are talking to elected officials which have no problem talking. And I don't know why you're laughing, Chief Davis. Might want to mute yourself if you're gonna laugh at us, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks. All right, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you, Joe. Couple of proclamations here this evening. So the first one is the POW MIA Recognition Day. Whereas the United States of America has participated in many wars calling upon its sons and daughters to fight for their country. Whereas the American men and women have been held captive by hostile powers during their military service. And whereas many American prisoners of war were subjected to harsh and inhumane treatment by their captors, which often resulted in death. And whereas Americans are still listed as missing and unaccounted for, and the families and friends of their missing Americans as well as their fellow veterans still endure uncertainty concerning their fate. And whereas the sacrifices of Americans still missing are deserving of national recognition and support for continuing priority efforts to determine their fate. And whereas the City of Canby is proud to join with other cities in the state of Oregon and the nation in honoring those that are still missing. Now therefore, I Brian Hudson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Canby, hereby proclaim September 18th, 2020 as POW MIA Recognition Day in Canby and encourage all citizens to join in this observance, given under my hand the 16th day of September of 2020. Joe and Melissa, usually, I think we get from the Legion a replacement flag for our flagpole to swap out the old POW flag and replace it with a new one. Did we get one from them yet?
We have not, and what I'll do is make a note to reach out to them to see if this year has that contribution. If not, I think our flag is in pretty good shape.
Okay.
So, but it's not a bad thing to kind of reach out and communicate about important stuff like this.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Second proclamation this evening is recognizing and celebrating Canby Public Library Day. Whereas the origins of our library reached back to 1937, when three members of the Canby Women Civic Club went door to door gathering donations and books to start a community library. And whereas thanks to their diligent efforts, the Canby Public Library was established in Canby's newly built City Hall on September 16th, 1937. And whereas, since 1937, the library has improved the quality of life in Canby by serving as a center of community life and discourse, offering opportunities for people to enrich their lives through educational, cultural, and artistic experiences. And whereas libraries create better citizens and safeguard the future of our community by enabling individuals to make informed decisions about their self-governance, by promoting unrestricted access to information, by supporting print and technological literacy, lifelong learning, and the free expression of ideas. And whereas over the course of many years, Canby has been well-served by its public library, which continues to make Canby a great place to live and work. Now therefore, I Mayor Hudson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Canby, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2020, this Canby Public Library Day and encourage all residents to take advantage of the many resources the library offers and to take part in the many activities being held to commemorate Canby Public Library Day, given under my hand the 16th day of September of 2020. I know we have a new library director and I've not had a chance to meet them yet. And I know that we've, it's hard to function normally as a library. But I will have to say that the library has done a great job in engaging the community in a lot of different ways through the vignettes in the windows of stories and books to the new book club that I know, I believe I heard Counselor Spoon is involved in. To curbside pickup for on-holds and things like that, finding ways to step in and continue to try to provide a great service. So I really do appreciate everything that our library staff has done during this pandemic. And I know with school is, I think, hopefully, fingers crossed, starting on Thursday for Canby School District. I know that the library will play a very big part moving forward here as we go into a virtual classroom for most of Canby students. So to the library team, thank you for all that you do and will do coming up here in the next couple of months. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna report, one of my reports was gonna be that Danny Smith is our incoming library director as of next Monday, the 21st. He's not here to accept this award. The one bragging thing that I think I would say for our library system as a whole and our part in it is that when COVID struck and there were, I think, a backlog of about 43,000 holds that people had, and instead of erasing them and just starting anew, they actually wanted to honor all of those holds. So they have been busting it to try to get to everybody who wanted books during all of COVID times, trying to play catch-up. And it's pretty amazing. So they, they actually take their service so seriously that they were willing to basically take a daunting task of 43,000 holds and call everybody up and tell them that their books are ready to pick up. So we're looking, we're looking really forward to when we get to Phase Two and we can open up shop and let people come in and actually experience, you know, the people who are sitting here every day still working. Let them actually get a little feedback from real people would be pretty sweet. So we're looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you, Joe. And when you do talk to them, please extend our thanks from the council to the team there and thank them for everything that they've been doing. Next on the agenda is citizen input and community announcements. I do know that we have Chief Davis here for this part of the agenda. Melissa, do we, do we have anyone else in terms of community input announcements?
We do not.
Okay. Well, Chief Davis, I will let you work with Melissa here to give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor and the City Council. When Melissa's putting up the map here, I just wanted to, last, this last Tuesday was September 11th, 9/11, and we had to cancel our event. However, the Canby Police Department came over along with firefighters and we did have a moment of silence and a tribute by lowering our flag to half mask and ringing the bell. So we very much appreciate the police officers coming over and joining us with that. I thought I would give you just an update of the fires that are occurring in our region. First off, I'd like to compliment Chief Brett Smith, George Stroh, and Jose for their work in coordination of the city's mini operation, EOC operation. Is, we were extremely busy. They did an excellent job in coordinating with the, with Clackamas County Emergency Management in ensuring that Canby was taken care of through the county. So hats off to those guys for doing a great job. The quick update on the fires, the map you're looking at basically shows the lower side of the map is the Beechey Creek Fire. Those are the two fires that they were extremely concerned about coming together last week and they had to take a pause because of the fire fronts on both of those fires. Good news is, is both fire lines have been extended on both ends and they feel fairly confident that those two fires will not join. But if they do, it will be in a very slow, methodical method, which is good. The other fire that's occurring that barely shows up on the map is actually the Lions Head Fire in proximity. That is, the Lions Head Fire is up on Highway 22, working into the Jefferson Wilderness Area. That fire grew over 20,000 acres because it is actually above the inversion layer and so it's very volatile. The Riverside Fire, which is the big one in the center of the map that you're looking at, is 135,956 acres with 3% containment. Now, don't be alarmed by the 3% because the 3% that we want to see contained is in the populated areas so that we could stop that moving from where the population is. The Riverside has a Type 1 team, which is a federal team assigned to it, which brings numerous resources from around the area. This particular team is out of Utah that's managing the Riverside Fire. We have not been able to have air support on this fire because of the inversion and they can't see it. As well as the night that I was up on Under Road requesting air support, we weren't able to fly it because of the dense smoke for them to be able to see the fire. The Beechey Creek Fire, which is the fire that was actually up on the mountain, working through Marion County, is 45,333 acres and is 15% contained. The Under Fire, we termed as the Under Fire, was the one I was incident commander for, for about two to three days, is 496 acres. It's 100% lined, which means that we have the entire fire lined and all residents taken care of. And, but we're still at 0% containment on that, which means making sure that areas and hotspots are all, are all the way out. The Doty Fire, which is in Estacada, Proverb, is 1,452 acres and it's 30% lined. The Well Hoyt Fire, that fire was unchecked for quite a while because of lack of resources. That's 562 acres, 100% lined with 0%, and the Grave Creek Fire is 44 acres. The good news is on the damage assessment so far, on the Riverside, there were 69 properties that sustained damage. Of those, the, of the 69, there were 29 properties that have residents or outbuildings on them that were destroyed. One church was destroyed on the backside of the Well Hoyt area. But numerous, numerous properties were saved and houses were saved. The Beechey Creek Fire, 58 properties surveyed and damaged in the area. Of those 17, seven properties have residences on them. There were 45, over 45 properties with houses on them that were saved. The, the good news is on the, as you've seen on the news, on the evacuation levels, Canby, of course, is out of the evacuation level. That's a good thing. We have still in the to-go area, in the red area, we still have 5,665 residences. Level two, we have 19,444. Level one, we have 38,000 and with no evacuation orders in place, we have 359,887 that are back home and outside of any of the evacuation areas. As we prepare for the rest of the weekend, we look at the weather and as everybody knew, today was very, very smoky. We had widespread smoke for tonight, low clouds. We're gonna have low around 60 with light and variable winds. Thursday, 30% chance of rain coming in from the west. We'll still have widespread smoke with increased rain showers occurring on Thursday night. New amounts of rain could be anywhere from up to a quarter of an inch or higher with probable thunder and lightning storms, but the good news is it will be wet without lightning. So that's good. And then highs right around 70. The smoke should be pushing out of here sometime Thursday night, Friday morning. We should see increased visibility with Saturday and Sunday looking very, very good. With the mobilization crews pulling out of the Colton-Molalla area, we are forming a South County Task Force to operate from 8 o'clock tomorrow until 5:00 p.m. tomorrow afternoon. It's gonna be comprised of crews from Canby, Aurora, Molalla, Monitor, Colton are all gonna be participating. And the purpose of that is to make sure that the citizens know that we have extra resources in the area in case something bad were to happen because some of the state crews are pulling out. We want to ensure that the communities of Colton-Molalla, Monitor, Canby, and Aurora know that we have some extra crews on staff. So again, the fire service working together to, you know, to support all the communities as a whole. So with that, I open it up to any questions that you may have.
I don't, I don't have a question, Chief, but you know, before we went to air here, just to say thank you to you and to all of our men and women that were out there helping and I don't know what else to say. It's been an amazing feat of just courage and tenacity. And again, you know, we talk about 9/11 and again, here we are, firefighters are running towards it, towards the danger and the fire to save people and structures and animals. Yeah, thank you is, doesn't seem quite enough on these kinds of situations. And I've been thoroughly impressed with the citizens of Canby and the surrounding area. I mean, Clackamas County has been amazing. You know, Greg can probably speak better to the fairgrounds than I can. I did a brief tour on Saturday and was just gobsmacked at the amount of donations that came in. And same thing all across Clackamas County and food, water, gift cards, et cetera, for all those that have been displaced and or lost their homes. So Chief, you are leadership personified and I appreciate you and we are very fortunate that we've had you as our chief. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to mention that for the citizens of Canby, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, of all the firefighters in Canby for the outpouring of support, as the mayor mentioned. You know, that's, that's what Canby's all about and is helping neighbors and helping one another get through tough times. And being part of a community is an honor to be part of the Canby community. The other part I wanted to mention too is for those that know Wayne Austin, he's a division chief with our volunteers here in Canby. This next Wednesday night at the board meeting, we're gonna be recognizing Wayne for 50 years in the fire service and to the Canby community. That's huge, 50 years, and he just keeps going. And we couldn't do it and have the support of our volunteers without Wayne. So I thought I'd pass that on as well.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Varway, you say something?
Yeah, I was, you know, I was gonna say it during my liaison report, but it's, now's a good time to do it. It's, you know, I just wanted to, you know, give kudos and a bravo to the Canby Fire also. And this is leadership personified right here tonight. You know, you guys have been going into fire danger and Chief, you've turned it around and thanked the community. And, and there's no thanks that we can ever give you guys to thank you for all that you guys do for us. So thank you so much. It means the world to us. You kept a lot of families safe. And that, there's never gonna be enough words to thank you guys for that. So just my hat's off to you and to your crew. We are proud of you guys and so proud that you guys represent Canby.
Thank you.
Into mute? There we go. Thank you for being here tonight to give us an update on where everything is at still. And there sounds like there's still a lot of work to be done to get these fires put out. So please let us know what we can do to continue to help and rally support.
Sir, well, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I'll move into Mayor's business. I don't have, there was Park, I don't have anything really. The Parks meeting was last night. I was not able to attend, so I will get with the chair on that and get an update at the next city council meeting. Steve Orr will not be happening next month with county resources being spread thin. The work that we need to do and pull together requires a lot of staff time and staff is busy in support roles, doing other things. So I have nothing on that front. So we're gonna go right into counselor comments and liaison reports. And I'm gonna go counterclockwise and start with Counselor Spoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just wanna thank you too. There are really no words for our community to share our gratitude for the long hours and the risk to your own safety to protect our community and the communities around us. So thank you for that. And I know you still have more work to do, but you are sure appreciated by the people here. And then also, I mean, I didn't have any liaison appointments, but I also wanna echo what the mayor said. For the rest of the people in our community, I was really inspired and moved at every turn by the way in which the community came together. And, you know, sometimes it's easy with modern media to focus on how we're different. But I think that, that we really see now that, you know, Canby finds a way to come together. And people were, you know, I know one parent would stay home with the kids so the other parent could go out and volunteer in some capacity somewhere and help someone somewhere. If it was anything from bringing a meal to someone that was evacuated, to spending long hours helping families evacuate or being at the fairgrounds. And I'm just really grateful and it makes me really proud to live here with everyone as my neighbor. So.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it. Counselor President Dale, you're up.
Yeah, there we go. And yes, Chief, thank you. It's, I was watching the videos that the Clackamas County Sheriff released and right there in the middle of all the mayhem and smoke and embers going everywhere, it's quite something to see. Red fire trucks with Canby on the side and Canby reflectors showing up on the back of turnout. So thank you. I know it got dicey. I know it got scary. Another day or two of winds and it would have been a much different discussion tonight. But it's, try not to choke up. It's, um, because you guys have been to my house a few times, mostly for silly stuff. But very seriously, knowing that you're always going to be between us and it, even in the worst of cases, is something. So thank you, Chief. Greatly appreciate it. On happier notes, or I don't know if it's happy or not, we can talk about a rate increase for water coming up from Canby Utility. They have not had a rate increase in four years. They did not do one two years ago because it was in the middle of some other activities and they did not want to impact the community. Pretty modest rate increase for residences, it's 7.8%. So if you look at it in terms of their every other year, it's not quite 4% increase on an annualized basis. A little bit above the inflation rate. Mostly that's because the water service, it has a habit of wanting to run in the red a bit. It's, it's an interesting phenomena that, you know, they, they think they get ahead of it and then water sales will be down because of weather. So there's a little bit of makeup in that. In terms of what it means to the average person, the base water meter rate is going to increase from $19.81, a buck and a half, to $21.36. That's just for the base fee and then of course, the 7.8% on your actual usage. So that'll be coming up for public hearing in October and then should be on our bills in November. Comparing this year COVID impact and unemployment impact against billables, I brought this up a couple of months ago. It's, it's really interesting. The effect has been fairly minimal. I know Counselor Parker and I talked about this a little bit. The percentage of people that are delinquent is only up one percentage point over a year ago. So the number of people delinquent has hardly gone up. The amount of money, however, has gone up. And we talked a couple of months ago, I think, Greg, about those that have been affected have been significantly affected through job loss and such. But financially, it's, it's not causing a real issue for Cub at this point. In terms of water quality, excuse me, volume in August, we hit a very mild peak of 4.3 million gallons was the most. million gallons was the most. And this is a down year for water sales. We very often peak above 5 million gallons in a day, multiple times in a month. So our usage in the summer was down a bit. It was, it was a cooler summer. That's far below our historical peak of 6 million and we can actually purify 8 million gallons of water in a day. So we're far, far below our capacity. Speaking of capacity, the fire certainly will have some impact on our watershed. The Malala River watershed is surprisingly large. It's roughly 10% of Clackamas County is in the watershed and that's only the part that goes up to the city limits of Malala. But the part where we get the purification, the runoff through the forest and such, as the chief showed us on the map, quite a number of acres of that were impacted by the burn. Viola says at this point, they're not particularly concerned if, if and when we do get more particulate matter in the water, which will happen when the heavier rains come. It'll just take longer to purify. They'll have to have more exposure to glutenization agents in the water. So they're not anticipating any toxicity at all or volume that we can purify every day will just drop. But of course, with the rains come less lawn irrigation, less car washing and such, so our demand will be down. So stay tuned for that. Viola was right on top of it all through watching the, the progress of the burn and they've dealt with this before in other areas, but I knew people would be curious. And look at my notes. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Dale. It's been a while since we've talked about water and peakiness. Something from the Matt Michael era of water usage. Counselor Parker, you are up, sir.
Well, just a quick update. The county fairgrounds, we're wrapping up out there. About 80% of our guests have left either to another place. Some of them had, had been able to go home. As of today, we had about 450 animals, a combination of, of sheep, pigs, horses and cows. Our highest day, we had about 1,400 animals and we didn't keep a tally of the people coming in. We did an estimate that maybe at the peak, we had about 200 people on site staying there. Learned a lot of things. We're going to go through some deep reefs, learned that we're going to need to have some communications. Basically, that's a mini city and we need to have a way to get information out and back. So we'll be working on that for the next time that happens. Like the others said, very generous community. In fact, the resources outstripped our need. So we've talked to Ray Keen at Camby Center and any, any items that we will not be able to use or save in an emergency capacity, we will pass on to the Camby Center. And finally, Brian, you mentioned about last night in the parks. I, I had an open night, so we do want to try and continue moving along the dialogue with the parks. So next time, give me a holler, even on short notice and I'll fill in for you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And Counselor Varwig?
Yeah, well, I already said my piece about Camby Fire and just once again, Chief, thank you so much. I know that the library board appreciates tonight's proclamation, so I thank you for that. They will be glad to receive that. And I was going to mention also, that was already mentioned, that our new director starts next week. So looking forward to getting to know Danny and what he can bring to our library. And I know that the library staff is eager, very eager to get back to seeing people and helping people in the library. They have done a phenomenal job helping people outside of the library and they are working very hard to function as normal as possible in a very abnormal year. So kudos to them as well. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, sir. I want to come back to Counselor Parker. I did, on my tour of the fairgrounds, did see the beginnings of the, I think they're, are they calling it the Spooktacular there at the fairgrounds? Do you have any pre, pre announcements or anything you want to speak to on that right now? I know it's, it was interesting being there on Saturday because touring with Lori, even though there was no fair this year, it felt like the fair minus the rides and, you know, funnel cakes, but based on all the animals that were there. But the, she, she's pretty, we're pretty excited about this, this Halloween adventure coming up.
Right. The, the plan is to have it run each weekend, starting the first weekend in October. So we've been kind of busy with 1,500 head of cattle running around there for us to really pay much attention to the promoter. I, I did come on site the other day and saw this fellow trying to pull down a tarp and I, I said, you need some help here. And he said, well, I'm with, I'm with the Halloween group. And so they're, they're continuing to set up. We don't know what sort of effects the fires are going to have upon the organization and capacity to pull this off. However, prior to this, this was going to look like the marquee event in Oregon because three of the largest haunted houses who won't be able to hold their haunted houses were willing to come in and distribute their equipment for a drive-through that would take, say, 45 minutes to go through the entire grounds. So I will let everybody know as soon as we figure it out, as soon as, as soon as the last cow leaves.
Sounds good, sir. I appreciate that. All right. We'll move into ordinances and we have just the one, which is a second reading and it's ordinance number 1538, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an employment contract between the city of Camby and Brett J. Smith and declaring an emergency. So we talked about this two weeks ago, so our police chief is opting to pull for an earlier retirement to take advantage of some, or before some changes in retirement things kick in. And so he will, this will in essence, hire him back until he officially decides to hang it up and we go through the process of choosing his replacement. Joe, am I leaving anything out in that brief synopsis?
Not at all. This is a testament actually to, it was a good choice you guys made two weeks ago to, to basically maintain his employment with us until a date certain. It gives us a date certain for, in terms of succession planning, but the type of leadership that was displayed, on display with, with both of our chiefs throughout a very serious emergency. Brett Smith was definitely a, a good partner in that. And so it really is, it's actually a benefit as much as it is a, that we actually get to keep him on until April 1st. So that's all I would add is just a positive kind of shout out to, to Brett Smith for, for being great leadership in hard times and for sticking with us until April 1st through disagreement.
Questions or comments for staff on, that we didn't maybe cover last meeting? Counselor Parker?
Actually, it has to do with something that Joe just said that I hadn't thought about, that, you know, modern HR law is that you can't ask somebody, when are you going to retire? And, and it becomes difficult to do succession planning. This type of arrangement that we have done with our chief of police actually gives us a precise date when we need to do the succession and it also allows us for an overlap. So let me just say for, for any of our city staff, I would certainly look favorable on doing this type of arrangement again.
Thank you, sir. All right. There's no other questions or comments. Gladly take a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move for ordinance 1538, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an employment contract between the city of Camby and Brett J. Smith and declaring an emergency.
And I will second.
Motion's been made by Council President Dale and seconded by Counselor Varwig to approve ordinance 1538, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an employment contract between the city of Camby and Brett J. Smith and a roll call room. So Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
Counselor Dale?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
All right. That carries 4-0. Thank you all. Next on the agenda under new business is just approval and discussion regarding the declaration of emergency. So.
Mayor, I can say something.
Okay.
Um, you know, this, this was a move that we tried to do as quickly as possible because it was a true emergency, especially when we were at evacuation level two and looking at potentially evacuation level three. We, Camby as of this afternoon moved into completely normal. No evacuation level whatsoever, which is a fantastic outcome this soon. We had no idea and thank goodness for the offshore breeze with the humidity in it to kind of help us to that situation. But if you guys don't find that the reason we have to come in front of council is immediately is it's just the way our code is written, that if the mayor declares an emergency as soon as possible, you guys have to be able to vote on it. If you don't vote on it, the emergency would go away. For this particular emergency, technically, we are still in an emergent situation with COVID-19. This emergency, one of the, one of the benefits of declaring was just in case when the federal government declared it to be a federal emergency, there was going to be potential FEMA dollars. And if we would have had something more catastrophic, we definitely would have needed to be able to tap into those funding resources. It does not look like we need any of those resources now. So you can decide whether or not you want to continue with this level of emergency. We also have a current one with COVID-19.
Perfect. Thank you, Joe. Council President Dale?
Oh, I was just curious to hear Joe and, and the chief's opinion. I noticed some of our neighbors, Mr. Mayor, was it Lake Oswego? A lot of them went into like the first week of October. Do we have any druthers either way?
Are you, are you asking Joe and just general opinion?
Yeah.
Um, I, I like the way, I mean, they say the situation is fluid and they say that, you know, they can't promise outcomes, but it's, it's looking very, very positive for Camby and clearly so this afternoon being normalized. So I, I don't have any strong opinion on holding it out. The other thing is we can go right back to it if need be, if, if things change.
Yeah, I'm happy either way, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to hear whether it's better to keep it open for a bit or if everybody feels good that we can always add and sign another one if we need it.
Absolutely. Counselor Varwig?
You know, if we were two days ago and I was still seeing lightning bolts on the weather report, I might be a little more inclined to continue on with this one, but I think with rain coming, I, I can go either way on this one. I don't think it hurts us to have it in place in case something catastrophic does happen. But I can go either way.
We can just, we can put in like an end date on this, much like, you know, Counselor, Counselor President Dale saying, I mean, the first of October is a Thursday. You know, we can carry it, you know, I mean, even as far, you know, as like the third or fourth of October, whatever that, you know, full week is that, you know, gets us through that and, and then just end it. So.
Mr. Mayor, quick question for Joe.
Yes, sir.
Does this, is, is as it is good or do we need to ratify it to make sure that we are in line for any expenses that have been incurred by the city or whatever?
Oh, I mean, we did it on the, you know, as quickly as possible. We, the expenses that the, the city incurred were basically overtime as it related to specifically dealing with the fire. Luckily, nothing burned and we didn't have to buy any special equipment. So we, we're, we're doing pretty well in, as far as that goes. Just to answer your specific question, if you guys wanted to make an oral motion to keep it until a date certain, that would be perfectly fine. And this portion of it is just to make sure that we, because we did declare it and we declared it according to our code. It's just our code says, in order to maintain it at the, at the earliest possible time, you guys need to be able to vote on it.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just so there's no questions down the road or anything regarding FEMA or whatever, I propose we just go ahead and ratify it till end of day, September 30th. How's that sound?
Works for me.
Okay, so do you have a motion?
Yes, I, I move that the city council ratified the declaration of emergency by Mayor Hodson of 1:00 PM on September 11th, 2020, to extend until end of day, local time, September 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
So the motions were made by Council President Dale and seconded by Counselor Varwig to approve the declaration of, approve and ratify the declaration of emergency by Mayor Hodson, myself, on 1:00 PM on September 11th and extend and come to an end on September 30th, 2020. Did I capture all that, Joe?
You did.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. I see five hands. Anyone opposed? There are none. That passes 5-0. Thank you all. Appreciate that. Move into city administrator business and staff reports.
Okay, and some of, some of these I'll try to go quickly through. We did cover that Danny Smith is our new library director as of next Monday, comes to us from Salem Library System. And I chatted with him and he says that his commute will actually be shorter now, so he actually lives closer to us than he does to his old job. So I think he's pretty happy about that and that he's really excited. He's heard great things about our staff and our, our nice building that you guys had built. So he's pretty excited to be here. We turned in the forms to the railroad for the quiet zone on time. So we made sure and followed your direction on that. We got those in. That was almost two weeks ago, so I had to kind of jog my brain to remember. A lot has happened the last two weeks. We are currently recruiting for a lateral police officer. There, we did have an opening that we just had yet to recruit for, so we made sure that that got out there. Our planning director position actually closes on Monday, so we're going to have all of the applicants closed off and in a, in a way that we can determine next steps and, and who we want to bring in for interviews. We've ordered parts in the last couple of weeks for our CTV5 broadcast, one that went bad and another one for redundancy. So we're trying to make sure that our broadcasts stay crisp and clear and that the communication between when you guys get back in here, our council chambers, we want to make sure that everything's working perfectly well, like a well-oiled machine. So we're doing that and those should be installed within a day or so. They're supposed to be here, but the mail doesn't always work as well as you think these days. I was going to mention, part of the talking points that they were putting out from the EOC, updates that you guys were all receiving as well, had to do with donations and I know that you- And I know that you guys talked about all the generosity of people. Um, if people still feel like they want to donate, clearly people have been inundated with physical donations. Uh, people donated all sorts of stuff. So now they're asking basically if you want to focus your efforts and feel like you're doing stuff. Uh, there are certain organizations um that if you're a trusted organization, you could donate money to them. Uh, the American Red Cross is one of them, but those sorts of donations uh still could go a long way for a lot of people because you know, Canby right now is normalized. Uh, actually, Malala today went down to level one, which is pretty fantastic. Um, especially because we uh, you know, we have a lot of our workers are out there and I can say more about that too, but um the uh, a lot of these people uh have been affected by this fire and it's just starting. I mean, some people are going to go home and find out whether or not their, their home exists or not. So, um, if you, if you have in your heart to donate, uh, one of the messages we want to put out there is um money donations to organizations that will help people will go a long way. Um, and of course, now that it's a FEMA disaster area, the federal government will actually have some monies for folks too. So, um, there, there are uh prospects for folks out there. Um, the uh, I spoke with our economic development director today and she's actively seeking a grant right now. Um, because she wants to create a business retention plan. Um, and so she's hopefully working on a grant and, and uh if she has her eye on it and she has her eye on somebody who will do uh the, the legwork, the consulting work to get it done for the price of the grant. So hopefully we'll have a business retention plan in place for Canby soon, which is kind of a cool thing. Um, I want to really thank, um, well, actually, let me say this. Uh, this week, we also had the opportunity, we quickly worked because of the air quality. Um, and I know I shared this with you guys, but greater public might want to hear it, is that um our staff was able to quickly not only get new filters in our HVAC systems in all of our buildings, but uh, we included additional filters in our HVAC systems. And it really went a long ways to get the smoke and, and particulate matter out of the air for our uh staff who just came back in. We, we declared emergency and uh sent some folks home for about a day and a half. And then they came back uh swinging on Monday, all our regular staff. Uh, of course, our essential and critical folks stayed the whole time through. Um, and that's kind of a good segue for me to just thank our city staff profusely. Um, we have some incredible staff. Everybody has not only been, you know, uh, extra helpful and timely with everything, but um, you know, some of these people were displaced. We had people who had to move their family out and pull up their, you know, rig to our wastewater treatment plant um with their animals and then go in there to work. So, uh, there were some people actually digging deep in both their personal lives and then still not dropping the ball for Canby. Um, and so we're super appreciative to those folks. Everybody worked together, uh, everybody's generosity. Um, and truly, our, our team, um, the, the chiefs and uh, we had several people actually, directors like Todd Wood of CAT, uh, we were planning for buses. We were uh, Jerry Nelson, uh, Dave Connor at the wastewater treatment. We were all planning for the worst. So, what, what we have after all the dust settles is we actually have a pretty good fire plan moving forward. Um, they have all the operations for how to not, you know, get all log jammed on the way up to uh, you know, if you're evacuating north, um, we were actually going to run a bunch of people south, that sort of thing. They, they kind of dusted off all these ideas, got together and really put together a, a, a great plan in case the worst happens. So, um, there was a lot of work happening even when uh people weren't seeing it. Uh, that, that Canby folks got together and, and worked all weekend on. So that, that was a just, just a fascinating and impressive display of, of hard work by our staff. Um, uh, let me see here. I will say Dave Connor at the wastewater treatment plant, um, who actually worked the whole time and, and that I just lauded for that. He actually got promoted uh last week. Um, we actually tugged him out of the union and uh made him a supervisor at the wastewater treatment fa, plant finally. He's been um here for 28 years. He runs a very tight ship out there. Um, we have all the faith in the world in him and we actually need him. So, uh, we're happy that he accepted his promotion to supervisor at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and we continue to see great things from him, even in emergencies. Um, and then our senior planner, uh, Rand Potter, who's still here, uh, is meeting tomorrow. Um, just over the phone with uh DKS folks to, we're trying to hammer down the uh update to our TSP. I spoke today with um Chris Majeski over there at uh DKS as well. And I'm looping him back in with, with uh Kurt McLeod. Um, because we want to make sure and bring this to you as soon as possible. Uh, they, they need to hammer out, I guess, a few more details about access points for the Walnut Street extension so that ODOT can sign off on us changing our transportation system plan. But um, it looks like we're, we're dot, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, if I can say that correctly. And uh, going to bring that to you as soon as practicable. Um, it has to go through the planning commission first, so you'll know when it's coming because it'll be on their agenda. Um, and we're just about ready to pull the trigger on putting it on one of their agendas, so you'll know exactly what's coming to you next. Um, then I have a couple of further discussion points, so we'll start with the first one that you guys started with, which is um Halloween. I had a city manager's meeting and I got to brag and everybody else didn't have anything going on. I said, uh, our city at least has, the county fairgrounds is going to do this drive-through Halloween uh haunted house. And so many of the other cities don't even know what to do because of governor's orders and COVID-19. Um, but I was chatting with the mayor today and we were trying to figure out if there's a way to piggyback off if a whole bunch of cars are driving down to Canby. And I know Council Parker's going to let us know as soon as the cows leave whether these cars will really show up or not, but I assume they will. Uh, it's a month and a half away. If all these cars are here, how do we direct them out of there? And maybe direct them around our city and maybe give people an opportunity to set up little stations or something to kind of have a reverse parade, if you will. Um, so I, I wanted to get your guys' input because time is ticking and we have about six weeks out. Um, if you guys want to see us try at least to get something going where we take advantage of cars driving through, give them a little more to drive through. What do you think?
Councilor Spoon?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about that. I'm all for figuring out a way to do something. Let me start there. Uh, usually we do our downtown event during daylight. Councilor Parker, do you know if the plan is for the Spooktacular to be after dark or is that plan is? Yeah. Yeah, so that, that would be my only concern.
It's a Saturday as well, the actual Halloween.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be my only thought is how to make it, if we can do something safely and get our local businesses and organizations involved and get people downtown, I am all for it. Um, we just need to figure out how to do that safely at night when we're using cars instead of feet to make sure that no one gets hurt and we still follow guidelines for COVID.
But all great points. Thank you. If, if, if there's no other ideas, we'll go back to the drawing board with uh Jamie and Calvin and try to see what kind of uh brainstorming we can do to try to be uh creative and safe and follow the governor's orders.
And also, let me, as, as a fair board member, let me volunteer Tyler Nizer, our uh uh event planner out there at the fairgrounds. This is his project, so uh he'd be available for any sort of brainstorming.
Okay, can you say his name one more time, please?
Tyler Nizer.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, I, Joe, I, I think uh, yeah, we've got to fit in those guidelines. I, I think if we, I don't know, I think there's a lot we could probably do um and encourage uh downtown businesses to engage in, in some way, shape or form. Um, you know, we might need to pass candy using a long tube or um, a, what are those, like, you know, I, where I work, I see a lot of my residents with those things and, you know, it's a little, little grabber, right? So you just grab it and hand the candy out that way. Um, you know.
Slingshots.
Slingshot, I mean, cars going by, like, you know, you know, practice, you know, aiming through the windows. I mean, there's, you know, there's some things that we can get done and I, you know, I was talking when uh with Lori and I know that one of my, when I lived in Southern California, um, one of my favorite Halloween events was Knott's Scary Farm. And so Knott's Berry Farm, they pull out all the stops and um, and it's the um, the, the, the people dressed to the nines scaring the bejesus out of you uh as you walk around the park and um, I know we've got people rolling through in cars and whatnot, but I still think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity to uh, to scare a great number amount of people. And so uh, if we can stretch that into downtown, I think that would be, that would be swell.
Cool. And um, one, one other thing I forgot to report before I create one more discussion is that um the, I was actually, uh, we signed, sealed and delivered our uh contract for a local attorney to uh contract out the prosecution in our courts. Um, so, and that is actually one of our current defense attorneys who was on contract. And uh, she comes to us with a lot of felony prosecution experience um, in others, from other states and then also from other municipalities. And she has uh defense work and she's worked with a judge, so she knows everybody, gets along with everybody really well. And I think we'll um keep the um atmosphere the same out there at the court, which I think is very important to that it's, it's a respectful and collegial atmosphere where we want to always do the right thing and wear the white hat. Um, and that's important because when you contract out work, uh, you don't get a say. They're not an employee. So you sign them up for the contract and then you have less power over how they do their job. We put in the scope of work, so we know what they're doing, but we can't say exactly, we can't give them pointers on how they're doing. Um, so it was, it was an important hire to, to make sure that somebody fit really well to keep um our current level of kind of respectable um uh, but you know, firm uh prosecution out there in our court. And then finally, our, our last discussion point, because I wanted to bring it up, was um, we, we came upon uh certain resolutions. Uh, I think we have a Beaverton one that, that uh looks pretty good. Uh, it has to do with open air um, and outside seating for restaurants and the relaxation of the permitting that would allow restaurants, if we were to pass a resolution, bring it to you next time. And so our plan is to try to bring it to you next time, uh, if you, if I kind of get a heads up here. Uh, to, to bring an open air resolution to you guys that would relax our permitting. Um, it doesn't throw all legality out, but what it does is it allows for a lot of restaurants, especially in our uh downtown area uh to, to take more advantage of open outside seating uh with sidewalks and sometimes parking spaces, as long as it's safe. Uh, and there are certain parameters around that, but what it will do is kind of speed up the process so we can actually get some folks to take advantage of the weather, uh, once the smoke clears, of course. But um, take advantage a little bit at least of outdoors while we still kind of have the COVID crisis going on. So, uh, am I, am I seeing kind of consensus or that's what I'm asking for?
Uh, for me, yes, for sure. I'm seeing some head nodding. Councilor Spoon, your hand is up. Go for it.
Yeah, does that include uh relaxation for, I know that in the coming months, um, I'm assuming some of our businesses will be looking to put up some temporary cover structures or, you know, tents, stuff like that. Does that in, um, allowance for that without getting a permit or approval? Um, even if it's a temporary seasonal structure for the time being?
Yeah, in, in fact, we can try to put something like that in because it'll make sense to have some coverage and maybe some of those heat lamps and things like that. But it's really looking to let them, if they have space that they can move into safely and not inconvenience, you know, passersby and, and um, other things like handicap spaces and stuff like that. If, if they do have spaces, we want to encourage people to be able to move into them so that they can open up and have higher numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I think that's great. I just remember not all that long ago, we talked about getting a permit for a seasonal tent and stuff like that. And I know that the few businesses will be looking to make their outdoor space usable even in the colder, wetter months. So, I don't want to allow all this ease here at the end of September, October, and then just have it go away in a month when the weather changes. So, for me, if there's a way we can loop that in and make it multi-seasonal, that would be great.
Councilor Parker?
My direction is that uh we go with the Canby tradition, which is permissive rather than restrictive and uh administrative uh decision-making. This doesn't need to, once we come up with a policy, it doesn't need to come back to the council. It's something the planning director or the city administrator or his designee can certainly make. My attitude is that we should do everything we can to let every business flourish in this strange environment that we're living in, uh, even if it means we might displace a parking spot or two or have a extra tent in a place that we didn't have it. Common sense should prevail, public safety, but to the extent that we can make make allowances to allow people to continue to have their businesses running in the winter months when many times it's fine to be outside in terms of temperatures, it's just a little wet. So that would be my direction is uh permissive rather than restrictive and uh keeping it at the staff level.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Varwick?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. You know, I want to just say that I'm super proud of all of the businesses in town who have done a lot of things outside of the box um to uh keep their businesses open during COVID um and to continue to serve the Canby community. And this is our turn to serve them back for doing such a thing. Uh, and so, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and make it easier for them to uh welcome more guests. And hey, that'll be good for us because we will get to enjoy the restaurants that we might not be able to enjoy right now when it's at capacity um a little bit longer. So, yeah, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Okay, I will gladly bring that to you next meeting.
Sounds great, Joe. Thank you on that.
Yep, and that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, thank you for those, that update, Joe. That was a lot. Um, next uh opportunity for citizen input. Um, Joe or Melissa, do we have anyone there that wishes to provide input? Of the citizens' nature?
No, sir.
No, sir. Great. Action review, please.
All right, you've adopted ordinance number fifteen thirty-eight and approved and ratified the declaration of emergency through September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Perfect. Um, before we adjourn, um, Joe, just as a, a piece of order for this evening, um, I know our plan is to go into exec session and then come out of exec session and go into urban renewal, correct?
But what you could do, because now it's past the time that it's been noticed, is you could go to urban renewal first. And that way we can make it a part of our record using our staff here at Gordon, and then we can go into exec session.
Well, great. Well, then let's do that. Perfect. And then before we um adjourn into exec session, um, I wanted to, Joe did a great job talking um city staff, but I also wanted to echo a piece of our Public Works team and our wastewater treatment team um sticking around, in fact, even moving into the facilities out there at uh Public Works to make sure that everything stayed up and operational um during uh the emergency that we just had. And so thank you to them um for all that they did out there. Um, and you know, after getting family safe and coming back and, and uh keeping Canby running. So thank you for doing so. Um, I will, so Joe, do we necessarily take a moment or to adjourn or is it just?
Um, you can move to temporarily adjourn uh with the idea that you're going to go into exec session afterwards.
Okay, then I will temporarily adjourn or ask for a motion to temporarily adjourn?
Yeah, motion.
I move to temporarily adjourn the city council meeting and our exec session.
Great, thank you, Sean. And thank you, Tim, for seconding that. Appreciate it. So that's been moved and seconded. Uh, the other two in favor? All right, we are temporarily adjourned until after the urban renewal district meeting. So thank you all. We will come, come right back and uh I'm going to turn it over to now, um, you are the chair. Tim Dale.
Hey, uh, Joe, is Gordon still good?
Yes.
Okay, just keep it rolling?
Please.
Alrighty. Welcome, Canby, to the Urban Renewal Agency Special Meeting of September sixteenth, twenty twenty. Joe, do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to make a citizen input to the agency?
We do not.
And I don't recall any emails and no hard mails, right?
Uh, we did not receive any uh correspondence. We did not receive any correspondence.
All righty. And do you have any community announcements?
No.
All right. Mr. Vice Chair, consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the June 17th, 2020 URA special meeting.
And I will second it.
All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair Hodson, seconded by Commissioner Varwig to approve the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the June 17th, 2020 Urban Renewal Agency Special Meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? And that carries 5-0. Next up, we have new business. Tonight, we need to approve Joe as our interim director of the agency. Joe, do you have anything to say about that? It's your last chance to get out of it.
This will allow me to actually pay the bills, so I, I would ask that you do it.
I move that we, yeah, we make sure that the Canby Urban Renewal Agency appoints the interim director of the Canby Urban Renewal Agency as Joe Lindsay.
All right, got a second from Sarah. It's been moved by Vice Chair Hodson, seconded by Commissioner Spoon to approve URR 20-003, a resolution of the Canby Urban Renewal Agency, appointing the interim director of the Canby Urban Renewal Agency to be Joe Lindsay. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Carries 5-0. Well, Mr. Interim Director, is there any other business for the agency tonight?
There is none.
All right, seeing that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
And a second. All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair Hodson, approved, seconded by Commissioner Spoon to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it carries 5-0. Good night, Canby, and we'll turn it back to our mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.